Kelly Farbaugh.
Here.
Alexandria Gribble.
Absolutely.
Sheila Gusto.
Here.
Eric Ornem.
Here.
David Sullivan.
Present.
And Horn is present. Next is public comment. Does anyone in the public have any comments on anything?
Um, I would like to know what the protocol is for like voting. Oh, I'm sorry Valerie Gavasak, three five nine South Mountain Road in Portland, Pennsylvania. Um, just a resident. Um, like what's the protocol for voting on official votes? From what I've read on the Sunshine Act, it says that it needs to be on the agenda in advance.
Correct.
Okay, was at the last um meeting on twenty seventh, was it made official with the vote for the eleven million dollars?
No, so clarification on that best straw vote that was taken, that was to poll the entire board to see how much of the project we wanted to do because this contract that we just got today got written up, so we needed to know how, what he needed to include in this contract, which will be voted on on the meeting on twenty ninth, so no money, no money has been spent.
So, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Well, the echo had reported that it was like it was uh going forward, that's why I was clarifying that.
Yeah.
And um they already answered the one question about like McClure is guaranteeing like if their efficiency isn't what they say it is, then they will make they have to.
So, yeah, it was stated in the last meeting, if they don't, they have projected guaranteed savings. If they don't meet that in the first year, they will come back and do improvements on their own dime to try to get us to that, that goal. And if they'll still monitor past that, if they still don't meet that, they will refund the district the difference of what was on that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. So first up, uh, board approval is requested to accept with regret the resignation of Alexandria Gribble as an elected school board director at large effective immediately. Can I have a motion?
Motion. Second. She have a reasonable reason?
Yeah, she's having some family things to deal with at home and she needs to dedicate her time to that. Any, any else?
We don't have an advertisement to be on for two weeks. Vote for first time.
Hopefully if we can get, if we get any applicants out, it'll be advertised tomorrow, right?
Yep.
So tonight, whatever.
We have thirty days to.
We have thirty days.
Over position.
So. Correct. Yep. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Number one, under personnel, board approval will be requested to hire someone as clerk receptionist at a salary with service not to begin until the district receives all required clearances. That's the place school clerk receptionist position. Number two, board approval will be requested to hire someone as the elementary school clerk receptionist at a salary of to be determined with service not to begin until the district receives all required clearances. Any discussion on either one of those? Okay. Under administration, number one. Board approval is requested to adopt the following resolution. It is hereby resolved by the board of directors of the Cameron County School District that student number two zero one zero one twenty four twenty five shall be disciplined according to the provisions set forth in the agreements in lieu of an expulsion hearing dated six six twenty five, which provisions are recommended by the superintendent and which are incorporated by reference as if fully included herein. Can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, so we are going with the superintendent's recommendation on this as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number two, board approval is requested on the Cameron County School District twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five safety and security report. Can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Okay, so in your packet tonight, you should have received the safety and security report from Anthony. Um, that details everything that was done this past school year, excuse me.
Is this um I'm sorry, that's like is this public?
Once, once it's approved, yeah, it can be, yeah, that's just, it just outlines all of the professional development, any of the fire, um drills, anything like that, it just were required to report that up.
Before we make it public and we clean it up and make sure that all the words are there, punctuation is used, it just that it looks a little more professional.
That's right, my hand. It won't change the content.
No. Right, but if it's going to the public, it should be, it should have punctuation and it's bold.
Yeah, they're just.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
I would like to maybe, is that the same committee members in a year or be such a, be such people in a year or?
Typically not, it's the same one, if somebody leaves, we add somebody to it.
Let's see Schneider, he probably won't be on the team.
Yeah, so it's. Well, he's, he's reporting again, so he could certainly be that person if he was trained in it, so.
They have to go special training the other day?
We have to be trained for it, yes.
Any other questions or discussion?
You have to table this?
No. You want to table it?
She said it has to be updated, updated or?
Well, it just needs corrected before you put out there.
Like period, period.
Social graphic punctuation.
It won't change content.
Look, so.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Under business, number one, board approval will be requested to pay the bills of the district as presented. Number two, board approval will be requested to accept for audit the May twenty twenty five financial reports as presented. Number three, board approval is requested to authorize the business manager to make the ordinary and necessary budgetary transfers in accordance with the requirements of PDE and to pay the June and July bills in order to close out the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five books and cancel the July meeting. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Any discussion on that? Do you have an idea how much you need to transfer or not yet?
Um yeah, it wasn't the budget last year.
Okay. Fifty thousand, okay. Capital reserve, all right.
Remember you sent us a copy of Monty Dill's.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number five, board approval will be requested to approve the bond purchase, whoops, sorry, I skipped number four. Board approval will be requested to approve the McClure Energy Savings Project contract. That's what you received tonight, so you have two weeks to read the book.
Hi, we're here, you're fast, you're gonna be here.
Pardon?
You're gonna be here two weeks to.
If you guys want to tell me, to tell me to be here.
Do we want them here? Or questions? Yeah.
How do we talk to the public?
Any other discussion on this one? Number five, board approval will be requested to approve the bond purchase agreement for the McClure Energy Savings Project, so if number four doesn't pass, number five will be a moot point. Correct? Okay.
How much would that bond be? What's in that package?
I haven't, I haven't looked at this yet, I don't know. If it varied from what was originally proposed or estimated.
Vanessa, is that packet available for the public?
No, no.
No, I'm not told to vote it on.
That's Vanessa's. So once it's voted on though, it's final, right? Doesn't matter what the public thinks?
Well, right now it's not open for discussion by the public, but um now, uh, any document is not available to the public until it's voted on, any document.
Have to give the public time to like do it before you vote.
It's at the discretion of the board, it really is.
But if you don't give them the opportunity to speak, then it really does not look good on us.
Yeah, I mean. Should be able to see it.
How does the public disagree with something? Right?
What's up? Especially with that kind of thing.
That's a lot of money, I mean, I got to.
That's, no, that came from from Audrey, that's about the bond.
That's like three times the amount of the market value of the school right now.
I've attended the last three meetings and say various and they give, they just give it.
Well, each board has their own.
Okay, but it has to be like.
Huh?
Transparency is pretty popular.
In the past, have we?
It doesn't matter.
I'm asking how, I'm talking to my board, okay? In the past, have we given, or how have we handled information like this when we've received it? Prior to my coming on the board. It became public after this other one.
We had meetings where they gave them, they talked with the public about the track project and they had some actual things to look at.
The whole idea of the workshop, we need to let the public can hear what you're about to vote on.
We don't even know what's in this yet, we just thought of tonight.
I'm just saying, the, the idea, or that's the whole purpose.
We have an idea of what's in it, but this detail, this has all the details that we didn't previously have, so.
So the vote might need to be extended until you have time to share with the public.
The public has the right to give their opinions before you vote for something, that's you're voted for by the people to represent us, but you're
I understand that.
I don't think.
What you hear, there's stuff in here that is.
No.
Tell you how we feel before it's voted.
No, there's not, but if this if this gets out to the public and we choose not to accept it, then what's everyone going to do with that information?
It's not the point.
What's it matter?
We have the, the public has the right to see what you're voting on.
Pardon me?
Can you just follow up with the solicitor and see?
I, I'm just gonna take a second and say that we on the boards have this very same problem. There's a lot of times that we get stuff in our packet that night to vote on, that we don't even get a time, a chance to really review. So I understand, it's not right, and I've said that for years. So I absolutely understand where you guys are coming from, and the eleven million dollars that's coming out of your pockets.
That's exactly right.
You should have the opportunity to speak and voice your concerns, whether it's something that we want to hear or something that we don't want to hear.
Then do we want a special meeting to discuss this within the next two weeks? Is that what you want to do?
What?
Because it's been.
I, but, but, but what is discussing when we don't have an admission?
Can I talk, please?
Well, I don't know, don't make sense.
Well, it's not the public comment rate at the moment.
Okay, I'm sorry, but
It's an important thing for the public though.
They're not giving us a chance for us to review something.
And I have a job to keep the meeting in order as well.
All right.
We've had multiple presentations where Eric has been here talking about this, he was here last month and talked about it again. In detail, in great detail.
Okay.
If that still isn't the point.
To take it.
That's not the full contract, I mean.
Pardon?
That's just a, that's just like him saying what you're getting, it's not the contract, what you're agreeing to on our behalf.
Correct, it wasn't at the time, this is the contract.
Right.
Right.
Did you get model for folks, like, or is it just one company you got?
No, Veragey was in here also and did a presentation and we, we met with both of them and the board chose after meeting with them that McClure was the better option.
I get, I mean, like I can tell you, hey, this and this and this is gonna happen, we want this and this and this, okay, I'm gonna put that all into a paper. Now you're gonna sign it and actually agree to it, don't we deserve to know what, where you're actually agreeing to on our behalf? Once you vote for it, it's done, it's a done deal here. You signed away eleven million dollars of taxpayer dollars.
I think the best route would be to have the solicitor review this, make sure there's no information in here on security or anything else regarding security vessel, those types of things. And if she says we have to summarize this against the public or give it as is, then, then do that.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with looking at it.
I mean, none of us know what's in it, like, not at the time.
It's really all the, anything you vote on should be given to the public ahead of time before.
Well, we can't give it to you ahead of time when we just started tonight, you know.
You, you don't know, all these things you just voted on, are they, are they?
What things?
Anything in the, let's just go broad here. I know, we were told a year ago that these documents are gonna be put online. Like others should be. I, I just don't know what the why you don't want anyone to read them.
We're not saying we don't want anyone to read them.
I know, I'm not saying it, but actions, people have it in mind.
That's not it. You're allowed to file a right to know request to get all the documents.
And they, and they never get it in time for the vote. Cause you have thirty days to give it to us. So you've already voted on it by the time I get it.
The meeting, the, like the meeting, minutes from the last meeting, um, like we don't know if you voted on it because.
Because those meetings aren't, they haven't been voted on, they're not official, they can't be published.
Right, right. So the next meeting already happens before we know what happens at the last meeting. Happen at the last meeting, like, cause the paper said that the vote was official, so we don't know that, I mean, we.
Well, that was, I mean.
I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying, we, you know, the public's kinda confused, we don't have, like, the only thing we would have, basically would be the minutes, I mean, the commissioners put their minutes on the day after.
I just don't understand, you're voting on something and I'm against it, I don't know if I'm against it, you saw it, you've already voted, cause you don't show it this. I don't understand, it doesn't, that isn't how other municipal districts that I vote to, they, they have the documentation and they know what to ask, I wouldn't begin to know what to ask.
We will take it under consideration, we will contact our solicitor and see what she advises us tomorrow. Okay?
And if it's available, it will.
Correct.
Or if you have a digital, electronic.
If it's not gonna be digital, you'll have to come to the school and look at it.
So, would we be able to like take pictures of it, like?
And get a copy.
And have, or have a copy of it?
We'll have it, see with the solicitor's ass.
So only people that can make it physically to the school will have it, right?
I have the letter that she actually sent last year. And it says the district has in fact been developing a procedure to publish the packets prior to the meeting. How's that going?
I'm not, I'm not against publishing anything, but the only thing that we have to publish according to front line act is the agenda, we can make it, we can choose to other items available, but.
I, in fact, if, if you don't want the public to know what you're voting on.
Well, I, as I said, I'm not a publisher, I'm just saying, we're legal, we are.
Well, sometimes information changes over time that it's.
I understand that, you can come to the meeting and say it changed, but right now as it stands, the last two meetings, I mean, we do not, I mean, you're, you're voting on.
You can't say that, we talked in great depth at the last meeting.
I'm sorry, meaning you could do that.
You weren't here, but someone.
Meaning you could do that. I mean, you approve things, but like the, you just approved the safety and security report, not saying there's anything in it, but we, we don't know what it is. And that, even your lawyer said it's I can't remember how she worded it. It's common courtesy to not have. I just don't understand that, I don't, I don't understand why I know you don't say it's being heavily, heavily public what it is.
What I don't get is you guys are all volunteers, it's been pointed out to me, this is a thankless job, totally thankless, I mean, kudos to you for doing this job. But you chose to do this job because you care about the kids and the people of this county, I'm assuming. Why wouldn't you want to inform everybody, so everybody can be part of the decision.
We do want to inform you, that's why we have these meetings.
But she made.
And there's many times where there aren't many people here.
I get it, I get it.
Okay, give me the documentation, how way it down so they can attend the meeting.
I'm not gonna pull the newspaper out, cause the newspaper does a great job, but.
I'm, no, I'm.
Nope, listen, the last meeting, we talked in detail and I, I get you only have so much space, a lot of those details didn't get put in the paper, and then what happens is people come to their own conclusions.
That's why they should have the documentation.
A public post from you.
If they have the documentation, they probably can grab from that, cause if you're trying to write down what things said, it's hard to keep up.
I wrote it without seat, it's very hard when you, when you guys talk about things and, and we're just.
Can't put the whole meeting in there. We can record it, put it online for the people to see.
And when you don't, you know, you just can't, and so it has to be put out there to the public, I'm not saying they need to read it, no, they can get it from New York.
Right.
But you're, you're more. I just, I, I just don't understand.
Again, we will contact our solicitor tomorrow, I'll see what she advises us. About, if they have a particular contract.
Contract? Uh, yeah, but I'm talking pretty much in general, so yeah, that contract, she.
Well, if when you discuss about the documents also, again.
Pardon me?
I've been talking to, I was asking Rana.
I don't think you have a question for.
I wasn't whispering.
Okay, I said I couldn't hear you.
I, I said ask Rana if she could include what to do with the other documents, or when she speaks to the solicitor also.
You're gonna continue what you started during your, is that what you're saying?
I don't know what was started, I don't post this stuff. So I don't know where we're at with.
But the person who does post it has to be told by you, what she posts.
Not me, and I don't, no.
By somebody on the board.
No, they don't.
Doesn't the president have to approve the minutes?
Their direct supervisor will, the board directs their direct supervisor. The board only acts on policies and financial and that's it, we don't.
Doesn't somebody tell the person recording what they can put in the minutes, like, in fact, I read that somewhere in my research. So she can put whatever she wants in the minutes?
No.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm asking, I mean, who tells her what she can or can't put in the minutes?
No, she puts what is said in this meeting in minutes.
Right, whatever she wants to from this meeting, she can put in the minutes. Like, I mean, cause she can't write down every single thing.
My job is to summarize.
Yeah, right, right. Does anybody have to approve that?
Yeah, they approve the minutes of every meeting.
Yes, you can approve it at the next meeting, which puts them together.
So. Okay, so if it doesn't go in minutes.
That's why it gets voted at the next meeting, is she has to compile her notes for the next meeting.
She does.
Okay? All right, moving on. Board reports. Um, yes, we did talk about it. Under administrative reports, supervisor of building and grounds.
Yes, uh, last week we got a new store board installed, uh, looks great, and it does function properly. Um, it's not an itch. Um, trees and berry bushes that we got from the grant, um, have been planted, they're on the south side of the high school here. Um, this looks really nice, uh, hopefully we'll be able to harvest from that. Uh, I had a great time with my staff at the accepting of the fund day activities, uh, everything went very well there. Kids had a great time. Uh, pool was ready for high school fund day and for the sea.
Thank you.
Was it closed today?
Yeah, they had a problem, we have a post today.
Was there a variety of fruit trees or is it just apple trees or?
There is cherry, plum, apple, pear, Asian pear, um
chestnut.
Peach.
Did you say chestnut?
Yeah, there's chestnut trees, there'd be two chestnuts, we have blueberry bushes and grape plants.
My thanks, he's gonna take care of that maintenance department, our students, we love our students.
There'll be some students helping the maintenance department. Yeah, we have a lot, we had some of the students out there helping us plant the trees.
It was done in conjunction with the chief's science.
Yeah, we have, we have, we have multiple people helping us with the planting and picks coming up and helping.
But is the snow gonna be used in the cafeteria?
I'm afraid that here, the bathroom needs to have like consumer science.
We got shares of the wealth, you know, there, there was money in the grant, they were projecting for dollars and stuff like that for the students, so.
Was the sign working yet?
Um, they are, we have power to it, um, they are supposed to be in the next two weeks to do the final install and, um, have our train.
We're gonna look, go in the, run the school, high school.
Um, there has been some talk about it, but nothing solid for it yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff? Thank you. Director of Technology.
Okay, um, it, I think I might have sent my last month's on here, so I think I'll have another one. Um, the senior chrome collection went well, collection all underclass of chrome books, clothes underlay, that all went well. Um, getting ready for the first day, so I'm just today, that went very well, my staff's doing great on that. Um, the end of the year activities went great, Monday, middle of the month there. Um, and we're looking forward to a productive summer, but there's a lot of grades throughout the district, several grades, and we have two previous grandmothers on our crew, and we're gonna share all of them. And one versus our in three more.
I did watch graduation on YouTube, so good job, like, I didn't came across well, I wasn't able to attend the person, but it all went well.
Like, did you?
Yes.
I wasn't able to either, so I was watching from my screen.
Anything else for Amanda? Thank you. Food Services Director, which we don't have, and she didn't provide a report, so we don't have any from her this month. Uh, Business Manager, do you have anything?
Finalized, like, she touches on the final budget, which she'll have for approval of the last year.
Okay.
And, um, just tidying up end of year.
When are we voting on that? When are we having discussion on the budget?
Yeah, I'm surprised I didn't say it on agenda.
Did, did we have a discussion on?
I gave you the preliminary budget.
Yeah.
The only changes are gonna be from the contract, I just got the initial contract. Well, actually I said I don't even have the official, I just have the changes, so. Those will be the only changes from the preliminary budget, we talked about that a couple of days ago.
Usually our workshop meetings, it's supposed to be anything that's on the budget, but if it's not on that workshop meeting.
So I just, I, I guess I can touch on it real quick. We were supposed to save fifty thousand dollars by taking over our own special ed program, and when I look at the budget and I do the math, it looks like, it's looked like it looks like it's going to cost us between four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars more. So I just wanted to have a discussion on that and.
So I just wanted to have a discussion on that, and we really, there's, I can break that out, I can break that out.
I have a last thing that would determine that we're being authentic, right?
I can bust that out separate, together, summary, so.
I just wanna ask, you picked a special ed.
Yeah, I can send that, I can send that with Rana's superintendent.
On Friday.
And then if you got any questions.
And we've discussed it prior to the vote.
Yeah. And then any.
I would like to know what she says first.
No, no, it's not by that much, I don't know what the confusion is, but I'm gonna re-strap that.
I have, this is all, that's all for special ed, right?
We didn't have special ed before, so the things for all groups are now all grouped up with special ed, before they were broken up, the parts that we did spend were broken up into different account codes. Now they're all under one, I think that's what the confusion is, it looks like more than one.
I mean, it is a little bit more than one, but not that much.
Two, two, so there's about hundred, you have to gather. You could do that for. There's a whole section that for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year has nothing. For the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, there's two hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars. Not their construction and curriculum, when you start reading down through, it's the director of special ed, so the assistant to director of special ed, and then all the things that come into that, and when you go back to special programs, and you look at it. It, there's an extra hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and eight dollars in that section, so when you have those together, you are over four hundred thousand dollars. So if, if I'm not reading that correctly, then you can break it out for us, that would be fabulous.
Anything else for Randy? Elementary principal.
Alright, on May twenty-seventh, we had assembly day in Woodland, it just kind of worked out, and we had several opportunities that, that worked out, but. Happened that day, we had students attended two assemblies, the first feature, Mark Rossby, who's a fitness specialist, puts on a BTO sponsored jump rope show. The second, we welcomed Miss Paige Weinstein, the current Miss Pennsylvania, we shared a message about kindness, understanding, and inclusion. And all of it, the young ones were very excited about the PR and the whole deal. Mid-grade were celebrating the end of the school year with an ABC countdown, the highlights included the smores, the sunglass day. We had experiment day featuring elephant toothpaste, which I did not try, and we had hack day. PDIS team's been meeting for reviewing a big program at Woodland for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We've been there, it was fun day led by Mrs. Heidi Johnson. Word and I, high school students volunteered and helped run the activities across the school and campus, new additions this year included a glow party in the wrestling room and a fun, enjoyable race featuring teachers and staff to kick things off. On May thirtieth, sixth grade students visited the high school for a walk-through and scavenger, I have special thanks to Miss Tashi and Grager for organizing that event. On the last day of school, Randy, Randy Cant Creamery came down, treated all the students and staff, threw a scoop of ice cream. We thanked the BTO for making that surprise available, and map scores from the end of the year, our reading scores looked good, our math scores showed pretty impressive growth, but. The, couple of the grades broke out, um, so it projects what, what you should grow according to the national average and all, so, uh, sixth grade, uh, uh, well, both, both of. Oh, I'm gonna, Mrs. Tam, I don't know if it was fifth grade, or both fifth and sixth grade grew over two hundred percent of what they projected. And then, uh, second grade, we broke out their scores, their, their, uh, their, uh, math growth was over two hundred percent of what they projected, so.
Great.
Pretty exciting, so.
What were the, what was reading, what was the reading ones, you said they were, do you know the percentage they were?
They were, no, it wasn't, it wasn't like astronomical like that, the vast majority of them, like, like, their performance is, uh, at about sixty percent title. So we're above the national average as they were growing, they, a lot of kids were growing, you know, like, maybe at the fifty-six percent, fifty-eight percent, kind of, so we, we had good growth. And, and better than the national average, but we were seeing like two hundred percent growth this year.
It's still huge though, with COVID.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, no, it's just one.
The issue is everybody's been seeing, it was great for both math and.
Well, enough, enough, we're beating the average and a, well, well, so to economic, we're, we're doing alright, so.
Anything for Sean?
Huh? Well, you didn't send me the number, did you? So apparently fifth and sixth grade reading was a hundred and twenty-five percent for one and a hundred and forty for the other, there you go. Just remember. Well, there you go.
Thank you. Alright, secondary principal is not here, um, his report is graduation was held on Friday, June sixth. Thirty-five students graduated and thirty-three participated in the graduation ceremony, Mr. Don Sustina was the commencement speaker. Backlorit ceremony was held on June third at seven PM, several high school students participated in the Woodland Fun Day as helpers. High school fun day was held on the last day of school, the students participated in various yard games, the swimming pool was open for kids to enjoy, and students council paid for ice cream from Randy, Randy Cant Creamery. The yearbook dedication was held on June second, the yearbook was dedicated to Christina Les, yearbooks were distributed after the dedication. The honor society inductions were held on May twenty-ninth, and the Keystone and PSSAs were completed.
You're up, superintendent.
So we're, the focus of the upcoming year is going to be to update our mission and vision, our mission and vision. Um, working on two grants right now, um, for submission mid-month. Uh, several of our newly hired employees are beginning with their orientation and redundant about our diplomas, okay?
The two grants, what do they stand for?
COPS, I, I couldn't tell you, it's just called the COPS grant, um, it's, it's a safety grant, it's a Pennsylvania, um, police. I know the, the Pennsylvania State Police are involved in that grant, it's just always called the COPS grant. The other one is, it's a new grant, so there are two grants the state puts out that we can apply for, we are eligible for each of them, but we can only pick one. So right now, I'm looking at the, gosh, something achievement, rural school achievement. Don't know what the first S is for, but it's one of those, it, it's up against the rural low income. We always have qualified for the rural low income, this is the first year we have been eligible for this one. This one is a little bit more money than the rural low income, but it has much more restrictions to it, so it's a determination of what fits best with our needs for the next year. Um, so those are the two, the COPS is the one I, that I apply for it every year, we have not received it. Um, they picked two hundred schools to receive it, and. Rule of thumb is if you're above interstate eighty, you risk not getting it, and that seems to be what it is, you have to be in Harrisburg and to get it, but I will apply again, we're going to probably put in. It's a security type grant, so we're going to put in the camera system in blind spots, that's what we're gonna put in that grant. And then the other one is probably going to go into just continuing to close the gaps, just making sure which one fits better, whether it's the, um, small, small rural school achievement. Yes, that's what it is, and the COPS, I have no idea, so I've always called it the COPS grant, um, but I can get that for you.
That's fine.
Um, so that, those are the two, rural low income hasn't come out yet, but I have what, what it qualifies for, it's a little broader.
Anything for Rana? Old business, anyone have any old business to bring up? Anyone have any informational?
I just wanna say I took a look at the yearbook, it felt great this year.
It did look nice, it did look nice.
Yeah, and the G and C's, it's first year, and the kids, I mean, everybody did a great job, so, so.
It's very neat, lots of pictures.
What do we got, so stop. Anything else under the break table? Okay, then we will adjourn the meeting at seven nineteen. Thank you.